So we will call this November meeting of Village Council of Glendale to order. Will everyone please rise for the name, uh, Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I note that we have a quorum. Do you concur?
Aye, confirm the presence of the quorum.
Okay. Next item, oh, and our agenda. Agenda has been circulated. Are there any changes to the agenda? I have one minor adjustment. We will do a swearing in of two firefighters ahead of the rest of the agenda after we approve minutes, just so those people can be sworn in and get out if they would like, if they don't want to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting.
But we have to stay.
We have to stay, yes. So, um, next item is approval of minutes from the October 6th meeting. Those minutes were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? None opposed, so that was unanimous. Next then will be, um, we'll move to the ordinance number 2025-48, an ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale volunteer firefighters, establishing a one-year probationary period, and declaring an emergency. Assistant Chief Lerman, could you tell us a little bit about these candidates, please?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you very much. Uh, first, we have Ryan Goodwin. He's a sixteen-year U.S. Navy veteran, serving as a law enforcement officer in active and reserve service. Uh, he comes from a strong family of military firefighters and paramedics, holds a master's degree from Eastern Kentucky University, and his goal is to pursue firefighting, to obtain certification as a firefighter and paramedic. Then we have Tanner Moat. Tanner is currently certified as an Ohio volunteer firefighter with a decade of experience. Uh, currently as a firefighter with the village of Hollinsburg, Ohio, that's up in Dart County. Um, and with his skills and experience, we're excited that he'll be able to hit the ground running with us. So those are our two, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. Um, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For ordinance 2025-48, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that ordinance passes. Uh, would the, uh, two volunteers please step forward? You won't have your swearing in. Stand right here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ryan Goodwin.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will patiently discharge.
And I will patiently discharge.
The duties of volunteer firefighter for the village of Glendale.
The duties of volunteer firefighter for the village of Glendale.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, and congratulations. Congratulations welcome too.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. Our next order of business then is public comment. Um, is there anyone here that wishes to address council? I'll remind everyone, this is an opportunity for people to come and address council with any concerns. It's not a question and answer session, but it is an opportunity to address council with any items that you would like to bring forward. Okay? Mr. Parrish, for the record, would you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Glenn Parrish, 100 Washington Avenue, Glendale, Ohio, if I may. First, then, thank you for allowing me to come in and address this body. Uh, as I have discussed with more than a few people on this council, I am aware that you guys probably feel the same way that I do about this village of Glendale. You love being here, you love what you do, and you love being in public service. So I want to say thank you. That being said, I noticed that the, the mill levy that is going to be on our ballot tomorrow, a 10.5 mill, that's going to...
Well, let's let him continue. It might be wise to say exactly what it is. Uh, it's a 4.5 mill.
4.5. I apologize. Uh, I wanted to make it bigger than the, the costs are still the same.
Okay.
I am standing here, uh, instead of all of the million-dollar homes that are in this village that is going to bear the brunt of the majority of this, uh, of this levy. I want to say that in researching the, uh, the village, I have also noticed that there is a vast majority of the ordinances that are being passed are being passed on a emergency basis. Emergency basis, I am a emergency response, uh, contractor for FEMA, so I know what emergencies are, and I know how they come up. I've studied, uh, different municipalities, uh, cities, state governments, and I see the way that they run. They don't run on emergencies because emergencies mean that you didn't think of it before. And to have a village that is, uh, utilizing emergency methods in order to patch things as they go by, I don't think that that's a very good, uh, way to run business, or even to do, uh, the business of a municipality. I implore that you do not, those who are listening on this broadcast and those who are on council, do not su- support this levy. I've seen more signs about a pancake dinner around this, a pancake breakfast around this municipality than I have of encouraging people to actually vote. Uh, there's a whole lot of signs there by St. Gabriel, none of them are saying anything about this levy. And the reason I say that is because of this. If we continue down the road of allowing those who have not run our, uh, our village for some time and have utilized, uh, emergency methods, I don't believe that we ought to give them any more money to do what they haven't done before. So I would encourage you not to vote for it because you would be throwing good money after bad. And so in standing here, especially for those who are going to be paying the brunt of it, I say, don't vote no on this levy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Parrish. I do have one concern I'd like to bring up about emergency language in a, in an ordinance or a resolution. Uh, Ms. Ryan, could you explain what that really means and how, and why that exists?
Sure. In the context of legislation, emergency absolutely does not mean the dictionary definition of emergency. It's a legal term of art, not admittedly the best phrase for general understanding, but what it means in the context of legislative action is simply that you can waive the thirty-day period between when you vote to approve legislation and when it becomes effective. And the state of Ohio has a fairly low bar for what that means and what you need to justify that. You simply need to provide some language, not terribly specific, to explain why it is a useful mechanism for that piece of legislation to move business forward. It is a very common exercise. It's been the subject of a lot of litigation in the state of Ohio for cities and villages. And at the end of the day, it is widely used and it is most commonly practiced, um, as more often than not, for the passage of legislation.
And based on that understanding, I might add that, um, what you said, it allows the work of the village to get done quicker, it reduces waiting periods to actually take action. We'd rather take action sooner and get things done for the village and not have to wait an unusual amount of time for really what would be no reason.
Yes.
Um, I will also point out with anything that we do that directly affects residents, uh, things like our ordinance for keeping chickens, we take that through a three-read process. When we change, uh, any code language, we take that through a three-read process, giving people ninety days plus to be able to make comments and understand that. So that's how that's typically done. All right. Um, is there anyone else that wishes to address council?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Parrish, would you again also state your name and your, and your address?
Always. I hope that you guys will be so courteous as to respond to my questions by being the president. My name is Kevin Parrish, residence at 176 Washington here in the village of Glendale. Wow. Taking a back vote of a response that you gave on, of a comment on my brother, uh, but I'm here in addressing issues that I've brought up for the last three months that you haven't addressed. And that is the, uh, statements of criminality that Glendale has done on the contractor of the Phase One sanitary sewer project, which was done in, uh, 2017. Actually, uh, I wanted to address the issue that the administrator keeps bringing up about, the court case of Parrish versus the village of Glendale. Actually, that ties into this case. It was public records that I requested that. They denied me because I wanted information about this project. And so I took it to court amazingly, uh, in the Court of Commons, uh, Court of Claims. That case was ruled on by a judge that used to have residence here in this village. It surprised me because I thought he might have recused himself, being that it should have been a conflict of interest. But being the political entity that we are and the old money manipulation and precision that's here, I can understand why he used bad judgment in ruling on this case that it should have been off of in, in, in with. But nevertheless, I appealed that case and it went to federal court because of the, um, improprieties that happened on it. And, uh, only reason that you guys do not have a scarlet letter on you now is because at that point, when I got it in federal court, I got a lawyer. And, uh, and discussing it with him, the devastation that would have occurred with that in Glendale, he urged me not to pursue it. So I drew from that case in federal court. But here we are again, because here we have, uh, conspiracy to defraud the public, the Ohio EPA, and, uh, misuse of funds that were for this project. I have, uh, documentation of what occurred on this project. Now, the only question I need for you guys to answer is, on the Phase One sanitary sewer project that was, uh, being owned by the Instr foam company, uh, also assisted by the Donley Company, which was the concrete drilling and cutting company, uh, did pipe replacement occur? So my question to you, did we replace the pipe on Cole Avenue, on the sanitary sewer project? Uh, my documentation says that if they did, they didn't put 286 feet of pipe there because when they finished, there was half that pipe still left on the ground. But my question is, did they replace the pipe? I noticed that on Alvin and the other streets that have had pipe replacement, they have noticeable scars that are left from the pipe replacement technique, and there's none there on Cole Avenue. I don't know, maybe they come up with a different technique that is absent of scars, but I do notice that. Also, I've asked a question back in August about the status of Kevin Bell, our chief utilities operator. Uh, it is established that he is an employee of the village of Glendale, employed by the village of Glendale.
You have about a minute.
My question is, why is he exempt from giving a report from his department? So for the record, I asked, why is he exempt from his department for giving a report about the situation with the utilities to the public on this format? And also, for the record, did or did not the pipe replacement on the sanitary sewer system for the Phase One, did it occur on Cole Avenue? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Parrish. Um, is there anyone else that wishes to address council? I don't see anyone. So, um, as I mentioned before, this is not a question and answer session. Uh, the response to Mr. Parrish the first time was a clarification of what I felt was an inaccuracy of what he had said, and I asked our solicitor to fill that in so the public understands what emergency language really needs. The second piece is, um, this idea that there was some sort of criminality in, in Mr. Parrish's interpretation of what occurred during the, uh, specific court case. The pipe was replaced or repaired. I don't know exactly the process used. The, the pipe went, was, was repaired. Um, you were, the records were given regarding that, or they were produced, so the pipe was done. And, uh, as far as the court case, I, I don't know, you know, what you're describing here, if that's all exactly what happened. And your question about Kevin, and so the first question's been answered several times. The second question about Kevin Bell, we've answered several times as well. And to clarify Kevin Bell and his role, he reports to Mr. Lumsden, who is here to give reports on the enterprise, also reports, uh, for Public Works. Uh, the fire department and police department report to the mayor. They are here to provide their own reports because they report directly to the mayor. So I think that, uh, although both of these things have been addressed multiple times by this council, um, I think that does it one more time. I'll say again, if public records are wanting to be requested by anyone in the village, if anyone is permitted to come and request public records, if they exist, uh, copies can be provided or they can be reviewed at the office. That's how that works, and that's how it's always worked.
I, I apologize there.
I will also now say that the public...
It was not in the contract, it was replacement.
The public comments section is done. Uh, we're no longer in the public comments section of this meeting.
It was a replacement contract, not a repair contract. The only pipe, the only pipe on this, on this project that was...
Chief, I think we're going to have to dismiss, uh, Mr. Parrish again.
The only pipe on this contract that was designated for total replacement because it was a hundred percent blocked, not repaired. It was unprepared.
All right. We may have to take a recess then.
Just a two-minute.
A two-minute recess. We'll take a two-minute recess. So, moving on, um, the mayor's report, I'll continue with that. However, uh, children in the village of Glendale, which is typically related to a birth, we recently, uh, learned that David and Lynn Funk officially adopted their son, now Graydon Funk, who I believe is in the range of seven or eight years old, I think, Nancy. So, not an actual birth, but a new child in Glendale, so we want to mention that and congratulate them. Deaths, um, Jean Mooney passed on October 6th at the age of a hundred and two, so a centurion, longtime resident, very well-respected resident. I did not know Jean well. Also, most recently, on November 2, Bob Trumpy, longtime resident, passed at the age of eighty. Um, I did know Bob, and if you'll tolerate me, I'd like to say a few extra words about him, um, relevant to Glendale and, and relevant to A Good Life. I knew Bob and I've spent some time with him over the last several years. He had a wonderful career, two wonderful careers. First, as a pro football player with our Cincinnati Bengals, uh, and then as a broadcaster for WLW and for NBC. And he excelled at both of these careers, set new standards. He and Paul Brown, and he especially credited Sam Weisch, wrote the book on the position of the modern-day tight end in the NFL. Previous to Bob, it was typically kind of an extension of the, uh, offensive line, a lot of blocking was involved there. But given Bob's skill sets and Sam Weisch's brain power, they turned it into an offensive weapon. As one of his colleagues, Bob Johnson, who was center at the time, said, "I had never seen a man that big who could run that fast." He said it was scary. As a broadcaster, he traveled the world calling, uh, several Super Bowls, the Olympics, uh, the Ryder Cup, and many other sports events. He was very accomplished, but the first main point to make about Bob, with all the success he had, when he recalled the old days and told the old stories, he always gave credit to others, whether it was teammates, his coaches, his broadcast partners, those that worked with him, those that gave him a break in the business. He gave them the credit. And of course, always his lovely wife, Pat, who lived through all of it with him. Second, although Bob was a strong-willed man and had very strong opinions and definitely had his preferences, um, he had a very unique way of accepting others as they were and for what they were. So as he sat at the Bluebird Bakery most mornings, with his larger-than-life personality and his sense of humor and his booming voice, he welcomed everyone to the table, everybody. So that is, to me, that's a life well-lived, and I just wanted to make those extra comments for Bob. So for Jean and for Bob, may we have a moment of silence. Some other things, events in Glendale. Um, we were honored, our garden clubs were honored, the spectacular garden tour was recognized by the Cincinnati Horticultural Society, and several awards were given, uh, six residents, one present here, and, uh, the Society of the Transfiguration for their arboretum and for our own arboretum. Um, and, uh, those awards, um, six, seven, eight of those, out of, I believe, twenty-five came to Glendale. So just a wonderful testament to our, our village gardeners. Um, the village also celebrated Halloween with trick-or-treat. Uh, several kids were out, along with their parents, trick-or-treating through our, our beautiful village. Um, it was just a great night for everybody that participated. Um, Glendale Elementary will host a Veterans Day luncheon on November 25 from 11:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. I understand it's just a great event, something that's very worthwhile attending. Uh, I would also like to mention, and I wish you were here, Chief Yetter. So a little bit about Chief. Chief, Chief officially resigned, or retired, retired from Glendale Fire Chief on October 24. Um, he, um, let me get some comments about Chief. He was thirteen years of service to Glendale, the last, uh, four or five as chief, I believe. He had, has forty-eight years of dedicated service to, uh, the fire service. The village will be conducting interviews this week to select, uh, the next chief. Our own Scott Lerman will be in those interviews. But a little more about the chief and the department, um, there will be, I understand, or we're trying to organize a farewell party for him, but during his term, Chief Yetter led the department in modernizing our equipment, improving response times, implementing new training programs, several public safety initiatives, and, uh, he and the team consistently strive to provide the highest level of protection for our residents. So we wish the chief well, hope to see him here at town hall for a nice farewell, but we wish him well in his retirement. I think he's going to keep his hand busy in some various things at Deer Park, and he also said, anything we need, we can call him. So congratulations to him and a big thank you for him. Uh, last thing I have is, uh, the election tomorrow. Don't forget to come out and vote tomorrow. And that's the mayor's report. Next is the village administrator report. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in the month of October, we had the town hall meeting on the ninth for the upcoming Rhoden Bridge levy on tomorrow's ballot. That will, uh, excuse me, that being the 4.5-mill ten-year Rhoden Bridge permanent improvement levy, um, it will be on the ballot tomorrow for Glendale voters, is issue 12. A video link to that town hall, as well as a write-up of the questions that came from the audience and, um, responses given at the meeting are available there, as well as some other information relevant to the, uh, to the levy, and as the mayor said, encourage everyone to come out and vote. Polls open at 6:30 in the morning here, uh, for Glendale voters, so I encourage folks to come out and vote. On the 20th, uh, our utility department replaced four water main valves on Congress Avenue. Uh, these valves, some of them were nearly inoperable, uh, so now these new valves will help with any future maintenance or repair that we might need to make by helping to better isolate the location of that repair and, uh, reduce the number of customers that are without service when those repairs go on. And then finally, leaf collection is now ongoing. Um, the, the new leaf collection truck is out in the village and will continue collecting until, um, December 19th, assuming the weather holds until then. So if you have leaves to put out, feel free to do so down at the curb. Um, ask that they be at least, uh, closer than four feet from the curb, just to help the hose reach them. Um, and also too, that piles are longer and narrow along the, the curbing to make sure that the truck is able to pick up everything in, uh, in one sort of pass rather than having to circle over a specific area. Uh, other than that, kind of a lighter report this evening. If there's any questions or any other topics to discuss, I'm happy to take that, but that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, David. Um, then next is the committee reports. Madam Clerk, could you call those?
Absolutely. Finance Committee, please.
Finance did not meet in October, but we are meeting on Wednesday, the 19th at 3:30, and I know we're about to go over committee reports, but just please make sure we're all scheduled to go before we meet, just so we can, so we'll have all those budgets, sub-budgets complete and ready to discuss in about a little over two weeks. And, well, um, email or text me if you have any, uh, agenda items you want to discuss in the, probably a three-hour meeting. So, but we're going to try to keep it to one day, just like last year.
Keep it to an hour.
Yeah.
Even better. And that is it. Becky?
Thank you. Fire Committee, please.
Fire Committee did not meet in October, but we are scheduled to meet on the 17th. of this month, well in advance of your meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And on the agenda, top of the agenda, is the budget. So, but other than that, there might be a few more things that Mr. Lerman wants to cover. Now, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. This morning, I circulated the Fire Department monthly report to all of you, so you all should have received that. As you can see, it was a busy month with community outreach being October is the month for fire prevention activities, so we're pretty busy and engaged with the community in that. Our incident responses were pretty busy as well, and then obviously, training is the main focus every month, and several folks attended various trainings throughout the month. So, that's all I have. Oh, Mayor, can I mention about the fire truck?
Absolutely.
And your pancake breakfast.
Yes.
Pancake breakfast.
The fire truck is scheduled to be delivered next Tuesday, right around 10:30, 11 o'clock here at the firehouse. So, I welcome anyone from council that is available during that time to be here. Chief Yetter will be here as well for that, so make sure that that fit in his schedule along with the mayor as well. And then, the rest of the next couple of weeks here, we're going to be focusing on our pancake breakfast coming up on November 15. Again, that's from 7:00 a.m. to noon, and we're really looking forward to having the community in for that.
Before you pass on that minute to the next person, could you just touch base a little bit on the pushing the new engine back into the bays? That, we've been talking about having the, the pushing in event, but you just touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in the fire service tradition, there's a tradition of backing in or pushing in a new fire truck, and that really dates back to the early 1900s, 1800s, when there was horse-drawn fire apparatus. And obviously, the horses cannot back those apparatus back into the bay, so they would have to unhook those for the horses, and the firemen would push them in. So, this heritage, this tradition has continued throughout the years into today, so we do want to pay respect to that tradition. We don't have the date lined out for that, but I will make sure there's a communication that circled, circulated through the community or Facebook page, but we're looking to do that on a Saturday morning sometime this month in November. But with the truck coming in, we have to make sure the truck is ready, it's outfitted, and it's presentable. So, more to come on that, but as soon as I have that date, I'll make sure that everyone's aware of it. Yes, thank you. And that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Nancy, can you say the date of the fire committee meeting again?
The 17th, 3:30.
I think I have, yes, I do. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Laws and Claims, please.
Thank you. We did not meet in October, but we will have to have a November meeting. There's, in the past couple of days, actually, some issues have come to my attention, so we'll schedule a meeting for that. And before the budget meeting, we don't really have a big role in the budget meeting.
Right. I think we're good there.
Exactly. But that's my report.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, please.
We did meet just this past Thursday, the 30th, primarily discussed the budget and thoughts on the future of the Lake Park Playground area. And those minutes will be circulated in the next day or two.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
Police did not meet last month, but we're meeting a week from today, the 10th, at 4:00. We'll go over the budget, and we'll also discuss the Flock camera contract. Needs to be discussed in 2026, early in the year, so we'll review that and any other items. If Amy and Nancy, you want to let me know. And also later tonight, we're going to talk about the part-time officer, the...
SRO.
SRO. Thank you for the acronym that I always...
Standard.
Too many of them. And that is that, so here is the chief.
Thanks. We were able to, last month, we had a fraud from the, that was done through the Proctor Fund where someone passed a fraudulent check. We were able to arrest the suspect. We last arrested them while he was attempting to pass another check in their banks. He's done this numerous times with different companies. We are currently in a hiring process. We're hoping to have one new full-time officer hired by getting sworn in at the December council meeting to replace Kelly Rollford, who has resigned from the police department. We are going to begin a promotional process to replace the sergeant, and that, we have three internal candidates for that, and they will be testing written tests next week, and then we'll have an oral board. We'll have an oral board with outside agency participation that will interview them and give their recommendations to us also. We are gearing up for Shop with a Cop, which is on December 19th. Any donations can be made at the police department to the Glendale Police Association, and we are preparing to get with the churches for the Thanksgiving box deliveries. We did have two officers complete, two of our newer part-time officers complete their crisis intervention training. We have one officer in the department remaining to get that, so everybody has it, and he'll be going in January. And that is my report.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
I just wanted to comment on the, looking at the number of arrests for the month, if you could comment on the role of the Flock cameras and whether that's impacting our numbers?
Flock has been a very useful, I couldn't tell you related to the arrests would come from Flock. Flock has helped in the recovery of several stolen vehicles. They do spit out anyone that has warrants, and if we're in the area, because it goes directly to the cruisers. And if we're in the area and we can stop the vehicle, they will make the arrest based on the Flock hits. But I couldn't give you an exact number of what pertains to Flock.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
We did not meet in October, but we are going to meet this Thursday, November 10th, at 4:00 p.m. to discuss the budget and anything else that needs to be discussed.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
We did not meet this month, but we do need to, or this past month, but we do need to meet in the next couple of weeks, so I will be emailing the committee to set up a time.
Thank you. Utilities, please.
Utilities did meet. We addressed a couple of topics that have come up frequently in these meetings, and that is the C-MOM. We determined, or were informed, that the C-MOM is a three-step process. It takes a number of years so far. The first step of the three is 80% complete, and it was suggested that in these meetings that an update be provided periodically as to where we are in that process, so that residents can be aware of that progress. Second topic was the fact that the water billing system that we purchased in the last couple of years, which is a very effective technical advantage, is not being used as well as we'd like to see it. Presently, about 10% of the residents use the process, the technology out of about 1,000, and it would be very useful if we can find some way to get residents, the other 90%, to take advantage of it. It will save a lot of time in the office, it will save postage, et cetera, and we would encourage anybody who is watching this on a video, please look at the website, learn how to use that technology. It's an advantage to you, it's very quick, and you may find that it actually makes the process an advantage. I use the billing electronic myself, and I neglected to pay the bill last week, so I need a reminder to make sure I do it, and I will do that this evening. But I would encourage everyone to take advantage of that technology. It's good for the village, and that's...
There is an automatic feature on that, you know, click and it pays for it automatically.
That's right.
I'll show you that.
So, that was the content of the meeting, and we will probably meet again in November if we can squeeze it in with all of the other meetings that are coming up. That's it, Becky.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is Treasurers' Report. Mr. Bogrand has that.
Council has received a copy of the investment report for October. We continue to do fairly well. Just for perspective, our money market account is now at 3.6%, earning 3.6%. We have about $600,000 in there, and our checking account has about $1.3 million at the end of October, and that only earns 1%. So, the idea is to try to maximize money market and actually CDs, but the remainder of our funds are in CDs and treasuries, and that's earning about 3.2% in aggregate, so... I think Finance Chair asked me if we're going to be hitting our goal this year of about $360,000, and yes, we will, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And a report from our clerk fiscal officer.
Two things. Denise and I did attend required fiscal officer training on the 16th of October, very exciting. Yes, will be my last fiscal officer training. Yay. So, you should have your budgetary packet with you, or your, sorry, your financial packet with you. We have moved this up in the agenda, because at the very tail end of the agenda, it kind of gets glossed over, and with the change in the structure for fiscal director, we want to make sure that this is moved up earlier, so it's not just like run over in order to adjourn the meeting. The first thing I would recommend that, as you look at this, become acquainted with Page 4 of the 42. That's the reconciliation line, so it gives you a really good baseline for, you know, first off, to make sure everything does reconcile, and it gives you a feel for the payments, the receipts each month, and is there any big change? You can kind of look at that as a, you know, a thumb shot or a snapshot of what's going on. So, like next month or the month after, the payments are going to be much larger because of the fire truck, so because we have to pay for that, and you'll see that difference in this. So, those are the kind of things, as a beginning, you want to keep an eye out. So, if you do see it, that a number changes significantly, the little legend on the side helps you find the details later in the document to figure out what happened. So, if you've seen, like, the receipts are down, you can go back and look at what constituted all the receipts, or if the expenses are up, you can go look at the checks, checks cut and stuff to look at why that could have gone up. So, I mean, nothing can get paid unless we've got, I was going to say allocations, and that's not right.
Appropriations.
Appropriations, thank you. So, it's not, we're not deviating from anything like that, but things do change as your normal personal budget change month to month. So, if you're intimidated by 42 pages, start with Page 4. Okay? Page 4 is pretty easy, so. And if you have any questions, see David or Denise, or I can help with some of it. But they are the answers, not me.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we have the reports, so on to old business. So, we will start with Ordinance 2025-43, an ordinance amending the Village of Glendale Code of Ordinances, Chapters 94 and 154, regarding the harboring of chickens. So, this is the third read that we have had for this ordinance. So, tonight, we will vote on it. In this case, there's no need to waive the three reads, because we have read it, we will have read it three times. So, are there any questions about this ordinance before we move on to the voting for it or against it?
The only change here on Section 3 is a change in the effective date of the ordinance, so to make the enforcement process more uniform, the Section 3 has been amended to make the ordinance effective January 1st, 2026.
Okay.
I don't know if Kathy needs a vote to make that amendment.
Did the previous version also have the "and declaring an emergency" in the caption?
It did, so that was also removed.
So, we would strike "and declaring an emergency" from the caption and change Section 3 to read as shown in your packet, and would need a motion to amend with those two changes.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
To amend?
Or, oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to finish writing. Is there a motion to make these two amendments to the ordinance?
So, move. Second.
Okay. Is there a roll call vote for that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for that revision?
Okay. To amend the verbiage of Ordinance 2025-43, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we have those amendments or revisions. Are there any questions about the ordinance itself?
I just have a question about when those who keep chickens would need to apply for their permit, the way this is written.
They should reach out to us, this is effective January 1st, so within the new year, we'll put some notices and information out publicly to let folks know that they do need to reach out to us and follow through with our office on permitting and those sorts of, those steps. But that's pretty much as soon as possible at the beginning of the new year.
After January 1st.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for this ordinance?
For Ordinance 2025-43, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the ordinance passes.
Chickens.
Yes, they're setting up for the voting tomorrow, so we hear all the traffic upstairs. The next ordinance is Ordinance 2025-44, an ordinance adopting the Village of Glendale Historic Design Guidelines as amended in accordance with the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission Resolution 2025-02, recommending amendment to the Village of Glendale Historic Design Guidelines and declaring an emergency. So, this is also the third read of this ordinance. I think in this case, we're declaring an emergency because we want this to be effective as soon as we pass it, not...
Thirty days.
So, see, I'm looking at this, it's not going to become effective anymore. Okay, there's revised language in this also. David, can you please point out where that is?
No, that, the language of ordinance...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
24 is the same.
I apologize for that. Okay. So, in this case then, is there a motion for this ordinance? So, move.
Second.
And before we move on, are there any questions about this ordinance? None?
No.
Okay.
No.
Since this is our third read, we don't need to waive the three reads.
No.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Ordinance 2025-44, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, that ordinance passes. The next is Resolution 2025-25, a resolution of support for the Mill Creek Trail feasibility study. This is another one that, this is the third read, it is a resolution. Are there any questions about this resolution or comments? None? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for this?
Do we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do need a motion. Is there a motion for the resolution?
We have a motion back from September, but...
I didn't know. We should start.
We should start and have one tonight, I think.
So moved. Second.
Second. All right. And now, we'll call the roll for the resolution.
For resolution 2025-25, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
And Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that resolution passes. On to new business. Ordinance 2025-48, an ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale.
We did that already.
Oh, we did this one already. Sorry about that. My paperwork is not as typical where it's double sided.
Yeah, it is difficult, yeah. It's tricky.
All right. Ordinance 2025-49 is where we are.
Right.
And this one is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Society of the Transfiguration for the establishment of a school resource officer and declaring an emergency. Between David and the chief, we've described this already to a certain extent. Maybe you can remind us exactly what this is, and then we'll take questions from the council.
Sure. I'll defer to the chief on the purpose and responsibilities of a school resource officer, but before I do, sorry to trick you on that, we'll review that this ordinance is a first read for the authorization of the mayor to enter into this, we're calling it an MOU, memorandum of understanding with the Society of the Transfiguration as operators of Bethany School for an SRO. This language was prepared by our solicitor and myself to present to Bethany for their consideration. We have not heard comments back from them sufficient to get it passed or consider passage this evening. Happy to go through the language of the MOU if there are questions specific to certain sections or the general responsibility or the general need for the agreement, but that this is a first read with the intention of having complete contract language at the December council meeting.
And if there are any changes in the draft that is returned from Bethany, we would want to do at that time a motion to amend the attached exhibit to be updated.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Section number two, or I should say, item number two, section D, the SRO will be a village employee with available benefits. Does that include a pension contribution?
It does.
And then, so then turning to item number five, compensation to village and school responsibilities or compensation, I'm not sure, compensation to village and school responsibilities, is that?
We're talking about, schools' responsibility to fulfill or for that compensation or for those contributions.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so anyway, my point is, so when Sub A, Sub I, under expenses including benefits, that's going to be all worked out numerically that, you know, the common is going to sort of reimburse the village for all that stuff, including the pension contribution, any insurance benefit, that kind of, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about that last time.
We did.
And I just, the way it's written, I was a little bit, you know, just wanted to make sure.
It's easier for me to use the word reimbursement that you used. I understand that a lot better.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. That's fine, that's the only question.
Reimbursed for all those costs.
Yeah, and I didn't think it would escape your notice, but I just wanted to make sure that it was, that's what we were talking about. Thanks. I mean, benefits is such a broad thing.
It is a broad thing.
Yeah.
I agree. And on that point also, equipment, any outfitting required, that will all be reimbursed from Bethany School or from the Society of the Transfiguration.
So, to that question, Mike, and I posed that question to David, and so it was, so the village will purchase all the capital assets, vehicle, guns, all that stuff. At the conclusion of that contract, if they decide not to pursue this, who retains ownership of all the assets?
The village retains ownership of assets.
Okay. After, so it's to be used for that period, and then after that, if they stop, then those assets remain?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the car, the fully equipped dedicated police vehicle is going to say Village of Glendale on the side.
It's going to look just like our police cars.
Same as any other police vehicle.
And that cost is included in the annual vehicle cost.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Remind me, if it, say there's an all hands on deck emergency situation, would that SRO ever leave the school to assist with something else in the village?
Yes, he is a village employee. If there was, if there was a disaster of some sort where we needed more personnel, yes, he would be pulled from the school.
Or she? He or she?
He or she.
There is a clause in this contract regarding that. Okay, sorry.
And chief, the other two schools in Glendale, are we still going to, one of our officers on duty, are we still going to check on those?
Yes, we check on them daily. Officers stop in each day.
Got you. Any other questions? Okay, so this will be a first read. If everyone is in agreement on the memorandum of understanding, at the next meeting, I think we'll be able to just go ahead and vote. It'll be the second read, but we can proceed with it. I know that the school is anxious to have the officer available.
I would imagine so.
I'm sorry?
I would imagine so.
Yes, they are. Okay, so that's first read for that. Next is 2025-50, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2025 appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. So, this will also be a first read. It relates to the 2025-49 ordinance. This will just be an increase, if we're able to affect this in this calendar year, it will be an increase to our appropriations in order to be able to fund this SRO officer. So, these numbers will likely change, given that we may only have one month of an officer instead of two. We'll see how it all lands. So, that's first read for that. Any questions about that ordinance that's tied to this one? One I have to find 51.
Real quick, want to point out for council's benefit that you'll see under section one, function 190, we currently do not use that function in our budgets, so we're creating that as dedicated to the SRO within the general fund, so we can easily monitor those expenses and keep an eye on personnel activity, personnel costs throughout here.
It's a good point. Okay, so moving on to ordinance 2025-51, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2025 appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. I'll let David explain this one.
I will say that the police budget is running thin on overtime appropriations, and I know that, I'll turn to chief keys to describe some of the ongoing activities that we've been leveraging that overtime resource for.
Having a younger department, we have more people going out, we have more of our officers going out and making arrests, and which causes them to have court time, which if they go down to municipal court, it's four hours of overtime. If they go to Glendale Mayor's Court, it's three hours of overtime. And then, we were running a traffic unit, but as the overtime was depleted, we have stopped that currently, right now. And so, this is just going to help fund the extra expenses in court costs and potentially bring back large traffic, dedicated traffic unit.
Potentially. Bring it in.
We, yeah, we, I got to see, I got to go look at or get with David and see what our numbers are. He said it was based on, what, three months?
Last three months average overtime, last three months average overtime use. Now, of course, the number can be, can certainly be increased if council determines, and of course, if there is overtime to be had, it would be used. If not, then it would just sit as appropriations and not be spent.
And I can, I can figure out how much each pay period, because right now, we're just running it 10 hours a pay period, and figure out what that cost is and figure it out through the end of the year, and then take a reasonable guess on how much court time is going to be used and see if we can stay within that number.
Okay.
Seems to me that 8,000 is only, it's not going to cover, it's not going to cover the return. You think it might, but there's no assurance that it's going to return the traffic.
I can get those numbers and.
Yeah, I would think that that's.
Our dedicated traffic unit has been very effective in, in, I'm not going to say in bringing funds into the village, but in the issuance of citations, they have been very effective in the hours that were used.
And again, this covers, this 8,000 is based on an estimate of prior overtime activity carried out over the next two months, November and December.
Including the court time.
I would defer to the chief on what that has been, what that use has been.
Yeah, it's been, it's been mainly court time. We just started the traffic program last month.
Last month.
That's when, that's when it's first started, was the first pay period of last month.
Okay.
And so, most of it, most of the number there is based on court time.
So, you think we recoup a lot of this?
Through the traffic unit? I think we will.
Okay.
But we're not staffing it. We aren't able to staff it, you said? If I am.
We, again, I got to go back and just figure the numbers to see if 8,000 is going to be able to staff the traffic unit and cover the court costs, the overtime for going to court.
And the traffic unit, pardon me for just focusing on this, but the traffic unit is responsible for speeding in the village?
It's responsible for all traffic.
Yes, among other things, okay, okay.
But if we, following Nancy, if we have to go downtown, if one of your officers has to go downtown, we potentially recoup more than if they just have to go to our Thursday night court?
No, Mayor's Court, I believe we hold more money from citations that get run through Mayor's Court than we receive through municipal court, which most of our traffic citations do go through Mayor's Court.
So, at this point, chief, I'll ask the question, are we in need of this ordinance to pass in order to continue the overtime that's needed for the department?
Yes.
In other words, should we, should we act on this now, and if it's determined that more might be needed, we could look at that in the December meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
That or, and I don't like to ever do this, we make an estimate now and increase that number, which I don't want to do without any factual information.
The first payroll, the first payroll of October, you said that the traffic program started in the beginning of October, was about $1,100, including the necessary pension contributions.
All right.
So, with four payrolls remaining, plus actually an additional payroll for the end of October, we're close to 7,000 in appropriations.
This isn't.
That will cover whatever overtime was used in those first two weeks of October.
Hmm.
So, there's essentially the basis for the 8,000 calculations to say that whatever overtime was used in the beginning of October for those first two weeks, which is when this program began.
Right.
Will, with additional payrolls to come, plus the use of this overtime currently, before we had a chance to come to council, and increase the appropriation. And 8,000 is going to be sufficient to maintain that same level of overtime that has been for the remainder of the year.
Remainder of the year, so that doesn't sound bad.
Okay.
Right, they're not getting, if they're running a traffic unit and they write five speeding tickets in a three hour period, more than likely, three to five of them are going to pay out, and we're not going to be paying overtime for court costs for the officer to go to court.
Hmm.
A lot of people just pay their citations out and go along their way.
Okay.
So, what I'm hearing, everyone supports what you're doing, so they're not, I don't hear anyone's against the 8,000, it's just, is that going to be enough?
Exactly.
To maintain the level of safety that I guess people expect? And David says, yes, it is.
Yeah, I believe it will.
Okay.
Until the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's a good estimate, so, all right, so here we are. Any other questions about this? No? No more questions? Okay. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For ordinance 2025-51, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-51, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, the ordinance passes, thank you. Last is ordinance 2025-52, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2025 appropriations of the water fund and declaring an emergency. David, can you explain this ordinance?
Certainly, thank you, mayor. We have some additional operational expenses in the water fund, specifically, there's a small amount remaining for the Greater Cincinnati Emergency Connection on our, on our utility following a repair that we have, are available capital appropriations that we've saved this year. The mini BACO, which was purchased at the beginning of the year, is the, is the reason for those savings. We've been able to repair a number of leaks and breaks in-house with our own equipment and our own personnel and our own in-stock materials, which has been, I would say, I'll get a firmer number for budget meetings, but I think we're already at a point where we've saved probably 15,000 this year in repair bills for just the waterside alone in what we would comparatively pay a contractor to do that same work. So, we're enjoying those savings. Those capital appropriations specifically for those repairs are unused, and we have some outstanding operating items that will need to be covered. So, essentially, moving the money from the capital side of the budget to the operating side of the budget, reducing capital and increasing operating, so the effect on the bottom line appropriations will be zero.
Okay. Any questions about this ordinance? Okay. Is there a motion for the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
For ordinance 2025-52, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-52, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our old business and new business. Is there anything else council wishes to discuss?
I forgot something.
Oh.
I forgot to acknowledge, for the acknowledgement of the reports, the financial reports, when I was blabbering on about.
Oh, okay, yes.
We didn't make that motion.
We're doing it at the end anyway.
Yeah, we did it at the end anyway, but those will not be a regular occurrence.
But we did receive financial reports. Is there acknowledgement of receipt of those reports?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, if there's no other business, we can have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.